Going full yashmac there for a minute, Roz.
Going live, so you should be in a second, it's setting up.
Yes.
It's saying here that we are streaming live.
That's it, thank you.
Right. Welcome councillors and members of the public, those of you who are watching. Just a couple of points to make, because of the Zoom meetings it's difficult to keep concentration. So please, we'll all take part in discussions, but we'll keep our our contributions as concise as we're able, and when everyone who wishes to speak is done, so we will welcome proposals. When you wish to speak, please raise your hand physically. And I will try to ensure that it's noted, the host will unmute you when you're invited to speak. Similarly, please raise your hand when voting. And if there is any unacceptable behaviour during the meeting, the host will mute the person or persons concerned, if it continues, they will be removed from the meeting. Just so the people can put a name to a face, when I call your name, can you please raise your hand right? Councillor Mayne. Councillor Prowse. Councillor Mary Louther. Councillor Wrigley.
Present.
And myself, Val Morford. And we also have with us our projects officer, Angie Weatherhead. Right, we'll go through some of the first page, some of it will be taken as read, one is declaration of interest. We're reminded that if we have any items to be considered that are declared as one of our interests, we have to state that. Items requiring urgent attention, I don't think we have any, do we? No. Freedom of Information Act, data protection, we've done all that, mobile telephones, we are all aware to keep distractions like telephones down, please, out of the way. Recording, this meeting is being recorded and it is also going live on Facebook. Public participation, do we have any members of the public joining us this evening? None. I would just like to say for those who may be watching, Civic Communities this Civic Communities Committee is responsible for most matters important to the public, but we've also responsibility to balance the needs and hopes against public expenditure. So we'll now start the agenda proper. Item one, apologies for absence. Do we have some? I know we have one from councillor Dawson.
That's correct, Chair, I don't have any others.
Right, thank you. And declarations of interest. Yes, councillor Wrigley.
Just to make it clear, as chairman of FNGP, I'm on the Budget Setting Committee. In light of declaring interests in that vein, I will take part in this meeting and vote on things, but may vote on things differently, come to the Budget Committee, given a full evidence and facts may have moved on by the time we get there.
I think, thank you councillor Wrigley, I think that applies also to possibly councillor Mary Louther and myself, councillor Mary Louther.
Yes, I was just going to agree. That we will agree.
And I will declare an interest in as much as ex officio, part of any meeting, anyway, thank you. I'm just making my own notes here. Right, dispensations, have we received any requests for dispensations?
No, Chair, I haven't, thank you.
Thank you. Minutes, have you had a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting? You wish to raise any points concerning the minutes? Why take it then that you are happy to approve these minutes and to agree them? Councillor Prowse? We're all taking a vote, are we, right? Everyone in favour of approving the minutes, or?
I wanted to say, I don't know, yeah, no, I don't know what it is, but there is a most awful noise coming through from somebody's microphone, I don't know whether it's whether they're moving papers or what they're doing, but there's a great big scraping noise all the time.
Has it stopped?
Yes.
Could be me. I'm the one with all the papers. Okay. Are you happy to accept that these minutes are a true record of the meeting on the 18th of November? Would you raise your hands, please? Thank you, that's unanimous. Right, I will get that one out of the way, that'll be a little less. Right, the purpose of this meeting, as you realise, it's an extraordinary meeting, is to just run through what we might or might not wish to put forward to the FNG budget committees, which are to follow in the near future. I hope you've had a chance to look. And I'm sure that Angie will be able to answer any questions. If you have queries about your items.
Sorry Chair, it's still a bit different here with the papers on the mic.
Sorry, I'll move that one over there, I know what it is, I've run out of space and they're on top of the computer.
It's very tricky when the microphones are in the way, so I apologise.
I'll repeat that then. You all have a copy of this report, which the projects officers brought, put together for you. And there's been quite a lot of thought that's gone into that, I'm sure that Angie will be able to question any points you wish to raise. I propose that we start working our way down the list. So the first item is new decorative lighting. Now, we had this as an earmarked reserve under the heading decorative lighting last budget until this 2021, 2021. Gosh, I am out of date.
Chair, sorry.
The idea is, although things have changed, and Angie will tell you about it, the proposal is to carry it forward. Yes councillor Wrigley?
Might I suggest that since we have all of these things that we were unable to do in the previous year, on block, we agree that everything that was set up for last year, that wasn't spent because of the situations this year, be carried forward into next year and we don't need to discuss each one, because I think if we have agreed it already, I think it is sensible to say if we haven't managed to do it this year, it's not because we didn't want to do it, it's because we were unable to do it. So the principle of carrying everything forward, I think, could be easily applied to shorten our meeting.
That's a wonderful suggestion, that applies to the first item. However, so we'll consider that the first item is agreed, hands up if you're agreed to that, please? Thank you. The second item isn't quite the same, it was an earmarked reserve, but this is to do with proposed refurbishment of the skate park. And we only have a rough estimate of what it will cost to solidify the ramp. And there was an additional request from young people to put in a few little steps for a scooter. The only figure I've been given is round about 30-35k just for the ramp. Yes, my eyebrows went up. Well, obviously, we can't go that far, but what we're asking is, can you decide or agree to ask for an additional amount to go into the earmarked reserves on top of this original 8,000, please, towards the fund? That was a tie, I think. I'll go for councillor Louther, then councillor Mayne, and then councillor Wrigley, yes councillor Mary Louther.
Yeah, and I was just going to ask, when you're saying we are going to put in some money to make it up, when do we think that we will be needing this 30,000 that you mentioned?
That is not a firm quote, and that would depend on when there's enough money to do the work.
Yeah, I'm just not.
The idea is to build.
I'm just not happy with that kind of, well, we're not going to do it until, you know, we do it. If it's been asked to do and it needs doing, well, then that is a positive thing.
Right, we'll come back to that, councillor Mayne.
And that's very similar to what I was going to say. I mean, if we're putting money aside for future work and we're not quite sure how much it's going to be, we could be committing to put money, a lot of money away, and there might be other projects that we're considering doing the same thing for, so I don't know if I'm very happy about that at the moment. I understand the 8,000 being put away for the, that's earmarked for the work that's going to be ongoing, that we didn't get around to doing this year, but I'm not so sure about starting to put away towards 35,000 pounds.
The 8,000 isn't work that was going on this year, it is towards the refurbishment, meaning mainly the rebuilding of the ramp, because it's costing us regularly, it's costing us repairs, and of course, that's always a health and safety matter. Councillor Wrigley was next, then councillor Prowse.
Well, I think it's sensible to put aside the amount that we want, that we normally need for repairs, I suspect that may be more or less in this last year, and it's hard to tell. I don't think we should necessarily put aside 30,000, I think there's an awful lot to do at this stage.
Yes, yeah.
However, something we could look towards, I would suggest if we have 8,000 that is carried forward from last year in the earmarked reserves, then we put a similar sum aside, knowing that we're going to spend probably 4,000 on the repairs, and that gives us a little bit put to one side, should we need to do a big, the big thing like the 30,000, at least we've got something towards it, and then we look to how we fund the rest of it.
Before I come to you councillor Prowse, can I ask Angie, Angie, we do have an annual amount set, don't we, for maintenance of the skate park, I'm trying to find it without rustling too much here, but there is separate from earmarked reserves, there are annual maintenance allowances on all sorts of things.
We have a budget of, for repairs and renewals of the skate park of 2,000 pounds was allocated in the current year. I believe, maybe overspent this year, I'm thinking, but I think it was definitely, it's definitely 2,000 was allocated for the repairs and renewals last year.
Yes, the 8,000 pounds was purely to start a fund towards the a new basically ramp. We did have to replace fences this year, which is what Angie indicated, that it might be slightly over the 2,000 at the end of the year, but there is always a fund in there for ongoing maintenance. I'll just go to councillor Prowse first, councillor Wrigley, and then back to you. Yes councillor Prowse?
Well, we seem to be going from pillar to post, what I was going to say is, as 8,000 was earmarked, and it doesn't actually say what it was earmarked for on this thing, but if you're telling me it's towards the ramp, it's towards the ramp.
Skate park new equipment, it says, on the annual accounts.
Well, I would say that if we haven't been able to spend anything this year, there will have been a deterioration, and I think that we should be putting, out of my head, I would be saying another 4,000 to that 8,000.
Would anyone else like to comment on that figure? This, we're talking now about the fund for the skate park new equipment.
I think that's eminently reasonable, I mean, I'd probably up it to 5,000 as a nice round number, but something like that seems reasonable. Just to draw your attention, we are anticipating, of course, that the Langdon site will start building out houses. That will increase the amount of CIL monies that are coming into the council, because those are on a different basis to the Red Row, they're post 106 now, CIL. So we will start to see CIL receipts into the council that we can use for things like boosting the skate ramps. So there will be monies coming in from other routes, but if we've got the monies in the budget here, that's a great way to kick it off. So I would happily back the four, I'd take it up to five personally. If other people feel, depends on how other people feel, but putting towards that, that fund seems a very sensible thing.
Is that a proposal councillor Wrigley?
Yeah, I propose we put five in.
Would anyone second that?
I will second that.
Councillor Prowse seconds it, those in favour, raise your hands, please.
Can I just say councillor Wrigley, I quite understand where you're coming from with the SIL money, but I never like to preempt something we haven't yet got.
I agree entirely, but it's just, I wanted to make sure people were aware of it, that there might be funding opportunities, and if we've got a little bit of money here, put it to one side, we can boost it with some money from elsewhere, then we can make it happen.
I would.
Wouldn't it? This will come under artwork when we're talking about where the money goes.
I don't know, it's a, it's a community facility, I mean, whether it's artwork or not, I think is is one of those, one of those difficult things, I mean.
I would just put into the pot that there is a play trail and flagship play park on the cards as well. Am I going to need additional money for that? So this SIL money is going to be chased after by various working groups, but there is another part to the skate park. We may, depending on when we are ready to get on with this, when we have sufficient funds and the situation is much improved, we may be able to agret a grant towards it from Sports England, but we won't know till nearer the time.
And those things often want match funding, so if we've got a pot of our own, then we're in a much better position to get hold of those funds.
That's, that's the point, thank you very much. So is everyone happy to go on now to the fencing for the water fowl? Now, that was in the budget last year, however, it wasn't under earmarked reserves, because we thought we'd get it done. For obvious reasons, we haven't, and the proposal is to carry it into an earmarked reserve.
Yes, I propose.
Quite happy, and add the 3,000? Are we going to add?
I was going to explain the 3,000 pounds is because there've been birds getting into the compound, which may or may not have had anything to do with the problems. And the waterfowl warden, I know Angie's going to explain in a minute, would like to make it a lot more secure, yes Angie?
The situation we have with the current mesh that's on is of a plastic, although it's one inch by one inch, it's a plastic construction, which means that the sparrows can actually push the mesh apart, where if it's wheeled mesh, they won't be able to push their way in. That's as the waterfowl wardens have explained it to me.
Well, can I suggest then that we put 15,000 in this fund?
Was that a proposal from, who made the proposal to start with? I think councillor Wrigley.
I'll second it.
Okay, so councillor Prowse.
I do beg your pardon, councillor Mary Louther got there before me.
So councillor Prowse proposed, and councillor Mary Louther seconded, is that correct? And the proposal was to
15,000.
Mark 15,000 pounds into the earmarked reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You will vote, can you just?
Yes, would you vote on that, please? Thank you. Unanimous. The next item is allotments. Now, there is an annual sum for general wear and tear, for example, there's recently been work to renew and repair the taps and so forth, to avoid leaks, leakage, which obviously costs money for the water. However, we do need to spend some money down there. And so what we're suggesting here is, we don't know the cost, so we're trying to be conservative, and we are suggesting that we ask for a fund of 2,000 pounds. The reason is that the councillor's landlord is responsible for boundaries, and there's fencing which needs renewing, there is hedging which needs renewing. The allotments themselves, some of them have sort of crept, and they need to be earmarked and measured and so forth. So there's quite a bit of work involved, we don't know the actual costs, and there is an annual small cost that's budgeted for anyway, but what we're asking you is, if you would agree for us to ask for 2,000 pounds to go into an earmarked reserve for whatever these works are going to be. We have a rough idea, but yes, councillor Mayne, I think was first.
Just, I think it's a very sensible proposal, and 2,000 pounds seems, you know, pretty good, decent money to get started with, so I propose it as it is.
And councillor Prowse, you had your hand up.
I was just going to agree that that seems a sensible thing.
Right, anybody else want to say anything about that?
Violent agreement.
Okay, everybody in favour?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I hope I've stopped rustling now. Yeah. Right, now. The wall along Old Town Street, I have sent a photograph, have you got it, please, handy? It is beginning to show signs of age, don't say as we all are, but I have sent a photograph in, it's not an emergency at this minute, and however, what I'm suggesting is that we begin to create an earmarked reserve when this wall has to be, have major work done to it. We've only put in a suggestion of 1,000, I would, I'm sure the councillor Wrigley's got a better idea of what it costs to have the new wall at the entrance constructed, when all the major works are done to the driveway, and I know it's not going to be cheap.
I knew you were going to ask that, Chair, but unfortunately, I've not had an opportunity to look through my emails, this was done under the previous clerk, when we had all the works to the car park done, which did overrun and cost overrun quite significantly, and it wasn't hugely satisfactory the way we had all of that done, so it was kind of hard to get, shall we say, fully transparent costs for what was happening. I think it's sensible to create an earmarked reserve for it. My concern is, I suspect that once we start fixing that wall, it may prove to be one of those things that unravels as soon as you start picking at one bit of it. I wouldn't recommend that we proactively start rebuilding it, but I think we do need to put some money aside to do so, but I think 1,000 is probably too small. I'm not sure what other people think in terms of monies.
Councillor Prowse, I think, wants to say something, and then councillor Mayne.
I think looking at the end of it, it's partly, is a cob wall, and cob, you know, there's a lot of earth and things there. I know there's a lot of stone as well, but it, I am quite certain that once you start to do a bit, the whole wall's likely to need doing. And I don't think, if we're looking into the future, we might as well make it a decent fund, and 1,000 pounds is certainly not enough. I would have said we ought to start at least at 2,000. We've got a lot of calls on our purse at the moment, and I'm concerned about these, but that wall's going to go, and it might go if we had a very heavy storm and it starts to get washed away, so I think we need to think that there might be a major expenditure there.
Councillor Mayne.
Well, I'm thinking along the same lines as councillor Prowse, but I was actually going to say 3,000 pounds, because I think if it wasn't a cob wall, if it was a straightforward rip wall, it's going to cost a lot of money to repair, and that's a specialist item, if it's in the reserves, we're not going to be spending it until it's needed, and hopefully we won't need it for a couple of years, but I do think we need to start building something up there.
So are you making a proposal on that?
I propose that we go for at least two and a half, maybe 3,000, I think, maybe two and a half.
I'd be happy to second that.
Everyone in favour of that? Thank you.
To say we're having a wonderful loving tonight, aren't we, everybody's happy?
We're getting ready for not.
We hope so, there's a lot of work gone into this. Yeah. But I would just say councillor Prowse, the, what appears to be cob on the end is actually sandstone breccia, large blocks, and I've already warned, well, advised the town clerk, that I have four large, very similar blocks in my garden, which I believe have come from the old church here, when it was collapsing back in the 18, well, 1700s, which is welcome to use should the time arise, and should whoever's doing it think it's suitable, but. So, all right, so we've agreed that we ask for 2,500 to go into earmarked reserve for building up funds for the inevitable work on the wall.
I'm a great believer in not putting off maintenance work and actually getting things done, and I'm a great believer in putting money to one side for the inevitable maintenance work that's going to be coming along in the future, it makes it far easier to bear when it has to be spent.
And as has been said, that wall, once you start on it, it's going to be the whole wall, not a bit of it. So we're looking at quite a big expense just.
I'm also thinking that with climate change, I know we all breathe when I say that, but if we have a very heavy storm, you just never know what's going to happen. So we need to be aware.
Right, we've got another lot of headings now, which are, these are to do with things which have not been in EMRs in any way. You know that we've been working, or rather, Angie's been working on producing the Swan Interpretation Board, Community Information Boards and Finkabos, you'll see from her report where she's got to, and I'll pass you on to Angie, she will just go through it for you.
I think it's probably from most meetings, people know that we just haven't been able to progress things. Most of it is to do with survey and installation costs, for example, the notice boards we've got, but we're just held up on various fronts at the moment, mostly to do with surveying. We just cannot get the contractors to survey the ground to say what piping etcetera is underneath, and then to be able to get the relevant licences.
And with the, where it's mentioned 6,000, that was for the boards which were already purchased, and Angie got them at a much reduced price. So don't let that panic you, but what we were hoping you'll consider is to have a sum set aside for all these different items to cover installations and whatever other sundry things occur. Would you like to discuss, oh, thank you councillor Wrigley?
Eminently sensible, I propose that we do exactly as set out.
I'm second.
Yeah, happy with that.
Everyone in favour, please? Thank you, unanimous.
Angie, if only all meetings were so easy.
Ah, that's agreed.
I say nothing.
The heading was to be under Community Information, because it got too complicated to specify each thing. Memorial Gardens, it's become regular, a regular agreement that 1,000 pounds budget is set. It isn't used usually, it hasn't been used this year, but we did have to have tree work, and these are the kind of things that you have to bear in mind. So you need a sum that will cover unexpected eventualities, then shall we say?
Well, I'm going to propose a set out.
I'll second.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Yes, by all means.
Is that 1,000 that is accumulating if it isn't spent?
No.
Or is it 1,000 available each year, and if you need more for a specific thing, then we'll work out where it comes from?
It's always been able to keep within it, but that's the intention, yes, just for the year, and we look ahead to see what we think might be needed, I think, as the landlord. The big problems may be the two big trees, but they are inspected by timberage. Did have to have minor work on them this year.
I think that is eminently reasonable and the least that we can do, given the amount of work and dedication that goes in from all the volunteers that keep that place looking so good every year.
Anyone else want to say anything?
No, I just agree with what you're all saying.
Is that a proposal councillor Wrigley?
No, I propose.
Already proposed.
Councillor Prowse proposed, sorry, I lost track there. Seconded by?
Councillor Mayne.
Councillor Mayne, and agreed that we asked for 1,000 pounds budget. Now, Manor Gardens, you'll see, what we're suggesting is a similar idea, because you now have several beds which are coming up to scratch now, to provide a setting for the weddings and everything else. The front bed is currently being worked on. But there is another bed that will need work, and there is still some money in the budget this year, which will, with luck, cover that. What we're, again, what we're thinking of is, or what I'd like people to consider, we have trees, we have big shrubs, we always have potential problems, it doesn't mean to say it's got to be spent, it means it's there. The one thing that would have to be spent definitely each year, one bed or another, would have to have a new layer of bark, for example. It's about 60 pounds plus vat for a dumpy bag. It's about sixty pounds plus bat vat for a dumpy bag. Um, for example, a big border along um, Old Town Street would need six to seven bags. So.
Proposed we do that, it seems eminently sensible. Again, the work that's been done there is fantastic and thank you for all the stuff and bits and pieces. Uh, it, at a thousand pounds to keep that looking beautiful, it's a bargain.
May I?
Uh, Mary, yes, councillor Mary Louder.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm just querying now, does the Monterey pine come on into that thousand pound?
Because. Not specifically, I think that would be a one-off if that one has a tragic accident.
Where would the money come from that?
Well, it would have to be um, an immediate decision. Yes, councillor Wrigley.
That's the job of FMGP to work that one out. There is the uh, um, uh, whatever it is, there's that fund for improving Dawlish, there's a number of different funds that are potentially available for such things.
Could I ask Angie, uh, she's got several photos and I want you to show them all Angie. There's one in particular with a corner uh, between Old Town Street and the footpath, which is full of conifers and so forth. It's just an example of the kind of things that have to be managed over the years.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll share my screen. I'll, I'll share my screen, but you may um, have to direct me through the photographs.
Um, well, that's fine.
May not have the right one.
No, it's fine. Um, I did load her with an awful lot of photos. I haven't got a wide angled lens, so I couldn't take suitable ones.
Are you seeing?
Um.
This is councillor Morehood on holiday in the, in the Aldar.
This is. I'm hoping that you're seeing the photos in front of me.
Uh, that's.
Oh, yes.
Order there, which used to be Timbridge, is not Timbridge. It's actually ours. It was transferred when we took over the land where the toilet blocks were. So we have maintenance of that. Um, more or less from the conifer up to the road. And, and the bay tree there is going to get out of hand and at some stage will have to be dealt with. So that's just one example. Thank you Angie.
Do you want to, there's more chair, do you?
If you could, just, just to familiarise people with what's there and what's going on. Has it changed?
No.
Okay, bear with me.
I mean, just looked at Carhay Way, that leads, Carhay Gardens, it's um, bit sad, isn't it? It's very green.
This is, this is the really, the next bed that needs to be sorted. It's very old. Um, our outside services have recently given it a haircut just so that people can get down the path. But the shrubs, bar the magnolia and um, uh, viburnum in there are well past their sell-by date and covered in ivy. And so that's one of the things that needs uh, help. Just to the left, you can begin to see a conifer and behind the right of those houses, you can see another conifer from the corner bed that I just mentioned and that is, those have to be kept under control, otherwise they're a problem. In fact, we've had a self-seeded um, oak tree right in the corner of that, close to the cottage and we're having to try and keep that subdued. It's been plugged, it hasn't as yet died, but there's lots of things like that. They're just examples of why you have to now go on with maintenance. Although we're, we're getting ahead, it's beginning to look nice down there. I, I think, does anyone want to see any more or you just want to go home?
No, I think you're doing a fantastic job with that chair and uh, oh, more power to your elbow and thank you for doing all of that.
Thank you.
Your horticultural knowledge and expertise, I would be completely lost. So thank you.
Oh, there you go.
So we had, we had a proposal to agree that we budget an annual one thousand pounds. That was councillor Prowse and seconded by councillor Mayne. Would you vote please if you're in agreement with that? Thank you, that's unanimous. That's great. Um. Right, floral displays. You, you will know that um, we managed to save a lot of money uh, last year by having these new, more expensive baskets, which we don't have to pay for this coming year. And Angie will tell you more, but she's even managed to get us winter baskets out of the budget this year. So over to you Angie.
Uh, yeah, it, it's a combined cost though, about seven thousand pounds for the winter and summer planting. Um, cost next year is likely to reduce again because we haven't got to buy the baskets. Um, but, but suggest uh, that obviously you reduce the budget considerably from what was allowed. That's obviously on the assumption that we can agree the same watering as we did this year. Um, and the contractor that we use seems amenable and we seem to have agreed a reasonable rate with Teambridge for water from the bandstand.
So what do, what are you thinking, what do you know are the minimum basic costs?
Well, I mean, if you, I mean, I don't think you would need the seven thousand pounds if you halved it. Um, but it might be worth leaving a bit of latitude in case watering costs go up.
So what we're looking for is an annual, a budget for this next year, twenty one, twenty two of seven thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, that should cover it.
Is that enough?
No, it, it should be because the, um, if you look at this year's, we've got water, uh, winter hanging baskets, one, five, four, four. And then for the summer planting and watering is five, four, but that includes substantial reasonable investment in buying the baskets, which we haven't got to do again, they'll last us through this year. So the, the difference in not buying those and if the watering costs went up slightly, we, we should be absolutely fine. Um, there's no reason to suspect our watering arrangements will need to change this year. We've got it set up now.
And I would just add that Angie uh, organised for us to draw water from the back of the bandstand for a fee from Timbridge. And our outside services now have a lance and they are able to water the baskets around the bandstand as well as those over the bridges and so forth.
Fantastic. I mean, that is just a really, really admirable piece of work that saves the council a, a huge chunk of money that we can use to maintain all these other bits. That, that's fantastic work. Thank you very much.
Councillor Mayne.
Um, I was, I'm just, councillor Wrigley's just taking it out, the words out of my mouth. I was just gonna say. Yeah, uh, where, uh, uh, while it's going and how, um, it seems that we're by, by purchasing things, the baskets and the lance and things like that, we're getting further forward and saving money. So I propose that we go with the seven thousand pound.
I'll second that.
So proposed by councillor Mayne, seconded by councillor Wrigley, that we ask for an annual budget this twenty one, twenty two of seven thousand pounds for floral displays. Correct?
Yep.
All those in favour? Thank you, that's all.
It's a really good example of where intelligent investment can save ongoing revenue significantly. And Angie, thank you, that's a fantabulous piece of work.
Um, I think you also need to thank your, your chair uh, for the basket suggestion, what we went down.
Thank you, Chair.
Only found out through chatting to people, it's wonder what you. Amazing what you've found out. Um, now Angie will have to tell you a lot more about this festive and decorative lighting. Um, this is an annual fee, not what's in the earmarked reserves. Um. Angie, I'll hand it over to you. We have had a lot of problems with lights.
Um, yeah, we couldn't have the cutenary lighting repaired as we anticipated due to the first lockdown. So um, we had an emergency repair, which is what you will see in the very first budget that you saw above. And then the actual lighting repair is the actual cutenary cost when it was all restrung and lights replaced. So that's now uh, fit for purpose and is absolutely fine. Um, it's all had new ties. And then obviously we've got the cost of switching the lights on last week, um, for which we normally are charged around three, seven, three thousand seven hundred. However, that cost may be less because obviously we haven't had a switch-on event this year. So um, that cost actually includes the storage and the um, looking after our festive light displays, because obviously we've bought them and they're actually in storage and they come down and they're put up and then taken down in the new year.
Would anyone like to start a discussion on that? Councillor Prowse?
Uh, yes, well, I don't think this is enough money. That, that was what I was gonna say, this is not enough money. In the old days when we had a lighting committee, we used to have six thousand for a start then. And times have moved on and we're obviously gonna need to, to do some more work. So I just think we're not talking about enough money here. Councillor Wrigley.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
I, I, I agree violently. We're not talking enough, sorry councillor Mary Louder, I think you were probably uh.
No, no.
I did not, please, please, carry on. I don't think, Mary.
I, I don't think this is enough money. I think if we're thinking about taking over the brook lights and doing other bits and pieces, the lights make a massive difference in the middle of Dawlish. And without them, it has been so dismal. I think we need to uh, be prepared to put a lot more time, effort and money into getting the lights together. I would even suggest that we might think about uh, bringing back the uh, uh, aforementioned uh, lighting subcommittee. Um, unless CAC wishes to continue with it. I mean, there is an argument that it is a lot of work in itself. Um, happy either way. Um, but um, we uh, should be investing in the lights and making them good because it is one of the things that people come to see Dawlish for and it clears up local residents.
I would just, I'll bring Angie in now in a minute. I would just say that there, Angie's been working on other ideas, especially for Brunswick, which is really suffering. Um, a lot of it depends on the standard of the lamp posts, which is Devon County. But Angie is working on it and we were talking about sometime early in the next year, beginning to go through this festive lighting through CAC with plenty of time to, to plan and consider even renting, but Angie will tell you more about this now.
Uh, just as I may, Chair, this is the, obviously the annual costs. Um, the current contractor we've got for the lights, um, that we have up at the moment, the festive lights, they're contracted for next Christmas. So looking beyond that, you, you'd be looking at a different contract. Um, and, and as you've said, this, this is just the annual, not the big earmark reserve that you had above. Um, but we, obviously with the brook lights, we have no indication of cost or commitment, which is why it was sort of open-ended when writing this.
Yeah, I think.
It's, it's a difficult thing when we don't actually have any facts and figures. And I know councillor Wrigley's been pursuing this, as has Angie. But it's very difficult to get replies, partly because everyone is working from home or understaffed or whatever. It's been a very difficult year and Angie's done remarkably well to get as far as she has. Would anyone else like to talk about this topic? Councillor Mary Louder?
Yes, I, I think that um, when I was involved with it, we did have a small subgroup who actually worked on the lines with the project officer. And, and I think it's, you know, maybe not just at the moment, but I think it's a thought to be carried forward because I remember with um, Devon County and those lamp posts round Tux Plot.
Brian Pavy.
We were promised, we were promised to have those renewed. And they were then, and I'm talking most probably five, six years ago. So I could think, see them coming up and, you know, all that area is always so dark and dismal that I think it would be quite a bit of money that we really do need to put on one side.
Um, I'd like to bring Angie back in again, please.
Uh, Chair, if I may, two things. At the last meeting of CAC, you agreed that the festive lighting would come back early on CAC's agenda next year, so it, it, it's imminently there uh, anyway. And regarding Tux Plot and the lamp posts, speaking to Les Pym of Devon County Council, going back into January, February of this year, it was actually in their schedule then to do this year, which is why everything looked more promising. And that was obviously pre uh, Covid nineteen.
Yes.
I don't, I would just.
Actually, and I'm, what, five years ago? Six years ago, they were definitely going to be done that year. But.
I.
Do you remember? They didn't get done. So you really got to stand on their heads.
They were promised this last year, but of course the situation has changed everything.
So getting, we do need the money there to.
Yeah, I'll call councillor Mayne and councillor uh, Prowse. Um, and I would just throw in that there are already four working groups and every working group means somebody's got to host it, someone's got to do the minutes. And if.
Well, that is a problem within the.
If we can possibly manage it within the community.
No, I do, I do not agree with that, Chair, and I'm sorry.
I was.
If you, if you are on the council and you're on a particular committee, sometimes it is tough. You get done with lots of things, but I still think it was in an, an important little group. Wasn't many, and it was three or four at the most.
I was thinking with the point of view of the staff, not from the point of view of councillors.
The staff money's lost.
Oh, well, my, I, my, what I was just about to say now is maybe I'm asking the question that I should know the answer to. When the, the sea wall is finished and everything's gone from uh, or, or the Luke Skywalker or wave walkers gone. Will we be able to have light in up to Bocov and along underneath, underneath the bridge? And if we will, if we can, who will be responsible for that? Because that's something that will have to be put into the budget in the future. I mean, I think light in there would make that absolutely fantastic. Really set it off, but would, would we be able to have it? Would we be responsible? Would network rail be responsible? Would Teambridge be responsible? I'm not sure. But if the, if, if we can, I can see Rose's waving, if we can, I think that's something's gotta be budgeted for.
Councillor Prowse.
Well, I was gonna say, there is supposed to be lighting going right along there and it is uh, network rail is supposed to be putting that all in. So if they're putting it in, I would expect them to be responsible for it because it's their land, it's their wall, it's their everything. Like, it's like the seating, uh, we are, we've got seating because we already had it. But they have said they would put lighting in and obviously not gonna do it. Well, we've got, as you call him, Luke Skywalker sitting there. But I was going to go back to councillor Mary Louder and talk about in the good old days or not, as their coast might be, because it never got done. There was a, a gentleman called, I think it was Brian Pavy from um, Devon County Council came down because I had a meeting with him and uh, John Winchester when he was uh, um, clerk and we talked about having the lamp posts done then. So we're most probably going back to sort of the days of the art and we still haven't got them done. So I never hold my breath where they're concerned, Angie. I'm really sorry, but it's been such a long, ongoing thing. But going back to this, I just think we need to put more money in and I would put ten thousand pounds in it, that's.
Indeed.
Right.
There's a number of.
Anyone else like to speak on this?
No, I think that's fantastic. Ten thousand.
Would anyone like to second that?
Done.
It's Dan Martin seconded it.
Oh, sorry, that was you and Martin, I beg your pardon, councillor Mayne.
No, not me.
Councillor Prowse.
Councillor Prowse, again, one, one of those weird meetings where councillor Prowse and I are thinking along the same lines.
That's confusing me.
Yeah, well, that, that's the object to the exercise.
It was a cunning plan we had.
Yes.
Right. Well, that seems to. Would you like to vote, Chair, please? Yes, can we vote on it, please? Sorry. It's all this um, concurrence here between our two favourite councillors. So completely.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
Can I, can I ask now before we all go? Um, when we, when we were going back to the floral displays, nothing was mentioned about banners. Uh, is, is they are our responsibility as well, aren't they, Chairman?
As I understand it, I will pass you to Angie again.
Uh, yes, they come out, I believe, of the investing in Dawlish normally when we have the banners taken up and taken down.
So that's not here, that's why I wondered why it wasn't here. Thank you very much.
We had four new ones made this year, I think, or four or five to do with the um, Covid. Um, yeah.
Yeah, there is a considerable sum uh, in the, or was a considerable sum in the budget for uh, investing in Dawlish last year. I can't find it. Chair, uh, councillor Wrigley?
Uh, I was just gonna say, before you wrap up the meeting, I'd like to uh, thank the chair and the clerk for uh, putting all the work into preparing all this. It's, it's clearly gone down very well with members. And I think it's uh, bodes well for uh, getting things done next year.
Yeah, we have to do something next year. People have had such a rotten year, the mo- the bit, the more we can do within the funds we have, the better for everybody.
Yeah, so unfortunately I don't think we'll be doing much before Easter from the sound of things.
But we could be ready to go.
We could indeed.
So if everyone's happy, I will call this meeting uh, to an end.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.